All set here? All right, fine. And we'll call this meeting to an end. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, February the 5th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Meeting in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you very much. Let's have the roll call, please.
Chair Kevin Seifried.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Pishon.
Excused.
And Commissioner Michael McDeermay.
Present.
We have quorum.
All right. Do we have approval of the minutes for January 3rd? Moved. Mr. Each.
Second.
So Commissioner Each moves for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike McDeermay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. We'll go ahead and sign this. Thank you very much. All right, for communications, review and approval of the 2019 Planning Commission timeline. I do have a question on that. Your schedule that came out with that, that showed who was appointed by who, if you are familiar with that? No, you're not.
No, that's the secretary.
Okay. Well, you know, I think that unless we change the ordinance, I was looking at the reference to myself, and I was appointed by the mayor.
So what do we have in there?
You see, that was the odd thing. My position, for whatever reason, has been co-terminus with the mayor.
So you will be up in May?
Theoretically.
Then you get reappointed by the new mayor.
Maybe. Maybe not. We're back where we were four years ago.
Yeah, I'm listed as an alternate.
Right, and Mr. Ernst is sitting here as, you know, the vice chair. That's not exactly an alternate.
No, that's what it says on the website, too.
Are you? Yeah, she's taking a look at it right now.
And I'm not sure when my term is up.
I think most of us are up on the, on the, on the May of 19th this year.
This year.
Right, except for Mr. Pishon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll have a commission of one.
Well, the, it's a long time between May and May.
Yeah, of course.
Is this an election here?
Yes.
A little late with the campaign signs. Haven't seen any yet.
Yes, just at least.
So one of the things that we need to take care of as far as part of housekeeping is annually, you were supposed to elect a chair and a vice chair. And so, Mr. Chair, we need to elect a new chair and vice chair. We didn't do it at the last meeting.
I make a motion that we elect our current chairman as the chair and our current vice chairman as the vice chair. I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, that's handled, and you'll fix that memo that went out for us because there's some things. Charlie Ernst.
Right.
Yes, it doesn't.
Yeah, we're going, Marlene has a little bit of updating she needs to tackle on the website.
That needs to be fixed. Okay, we've got that worked out. We have no public hearings. And what is this new board member orientation refresher? There's really nobody new here.
Well, it's your, actually, it's mislabeled. It's actually your annual refresher.
Okay.
So every year should have been at your first meeting, but we wanted to put together a slightly different orientation for you and refresher for you. So we have that prepared. It will be, if you're ready, I can be more than happy to start.
Yeah, let's do it now and move through this so we don't have any unnecessary delays tonight.
Well, again, this is your refresher session for your annual, for the record. I'm Debbie Love, I'm the city planner. Section 2-202 of the LDRs talk about the composition. It's seven regular members and two alternates. Five members are needed for quorum. Your staff is, actually, I'm your liaison, and the secretary is Marlene. We're from the community planning department. As you know, right now, we meet the first Tuesday of every month at 7:00, your advisory to the city council. This goes back to what we just talked about. There are four members' terms in the second, Tuesday in June of the odd year. Three members, the term ends the second Tuesday in June of an even year. The officers are the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. And you must be a resident. You can't have any elected or work, office or work for the city, and you can't have any liens or fines or code enforcement violations in order to serve. We are encouraging applicants to apply as well. Some of your powers and duties then are established in section 2-201. And you look, take a look and you make recommendations on amendments to the text of the LDRs, zoning map amendments. You also do review and make recommendations on the text of the city's comprehensive plan. Those, the first to, the amendment to the text of the LDRs and a text amendment to the comp plan you're going to be doing tonight. Land use plan, land use map amendments. You also approve the city's evaluation and appraisal report and approve any evaluation and appraisal report-based comprehensive plan amendments. And as a reminder, you need four affirmative votes for any zoning or land use amendment, so keep that in mind for tonight. Additional duties that you do is you review proposed plan developments. So when you get in a, a plan development, which you will be, such as Solomia in other areas of the PD, you'll be reviewing those plan developments. Of course, you do the allocation of the density bonuses through the conditional use permits. You review those. You look at development agreements. You just did one of those at our last meeting. You also do review and make recommendations on any traffic modifications or street closures that come before, before it goes to city council. You also make a, review, make recommendations to city council on right-of-way alley abandonments as well as any right-of-way abandonments or vacation. You make comments and review plots and waiver plots. And campus development master plans. You're going to be seeing the Johnson and Wales campus master plan maybe at your March, at most, your April meeting. Moving on, some other things that you do is you take a look at the ranking of the five-year capital improvement plan. That's part of the comprehensive plan, which is why you all look at that because that's, it becomes an amendment to your, to the comprehensive plan.
What do you mean by ranking?
Of the projects that go into the comprehensive plan. I mean, I'm sorry, into the capital improvement program. You'll actually make comments on the ranking of various capital projects that are proposed.
As far as priority and funding or timelines or?
Priority. So which, so when we have, for example, a capital improvement program in the comprehensive plan, are those capital projects that move your comprehensive plan forward? It's not sidewalks unless you have comprehensive plan amendments that said you're going to provide 100 feet of sidewalk annually in your comprehensive plan. So that would be a policy that your, your capital projects would implement. So you'd all then provide your recommendations on the ranking of those type of projects. That's actually done, it's supposed to be done annually, and I don't believe we've been doing that annually. We hold, you all hold workshops on the CDBG action plan, which you all have already heard that from Marie in housing. Again, working with housing. You look at the, and make recommendations on the SHIP program, as you all remember. Some others that you do is the CDBGs and recommendations for the CBOs. So as you can see, you have a wide variety of duties that you cover, as well as any type of special projects or studies, then you provide another form for public hearings. Some resources that we're going to make sure that you get updated on, and Marlene's going to give you an application that she'd like for each of you to fill out for your membership because when you're a member of APA, you'll have access to the Commissioner, which is a periodical that comes part of your planning magazine. And then the Florida Planning, you'll get the monthly newsletter from the Florida APA. And then, of course, the actual APA website. Once you become a member, again, as you all may remember, there's all kinds of great information that's available there for members, including what they have now opened up Planning Advisory Service, which used to be a separate membership. Now you can go on there and look up anything that you want to learn, anything about, and under the Planning Advisory Service, you'd get all of this great research. I use it a lot. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary Held. He's going to, yes, sir?
On this application for connect, we're just going to fill out the top part, correct?
Correct.
They choose in connection and compute your costs. That's not a?
No, we'll take care of all of that.
We're really isolating with one little box in the top left-hand corner.
Right. And Marlene will make sure she collects them from you tonight because we really want to get you signed back up. You already budgeted for those. We'll make sure you have the adequate resources that you deserve.
Thank you, by the way.
Yes, thank you very much.
You didn't forget. We heard you.
We never understood why that was, that just disappeared a couple of years ago.
It has to be renewed annually, so it just was probably missed during the renewal process. So we apologize for that. We'll make sure that that doesn't happen to you again. And with that, I'm going to go back to the PowerPoint, please. And Mr. Held is going to go over his refresher course in avoiding legal pitfalls.
It's so much more fun when we fall into them.
No.
Think of all that legal education that you would otherwise never get a chance to use.
Well, that might give Jennifer more work since I'm not, we're not litigating these days. So good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair.
So I'm following the same outline that we did last year. I don't know how much you remember from last year's presentation, but we thought it'd be worthwhile to go over it again since this is an important obligation that you have to satisfy these various legal requirements as you go about doing all of the work that Ms. Love has set out for you. So under the sunshine law, as you all know, meetings of appointed board members at which official acts are to be taken or discussed must be at public meetings. The city must provide reasonable notice and minutes are required to be taken. So if a meeting or discussion by Planning Commission members was held but not conducted according to these requirements, then any decision or action made by the commission is void. It also subjects you to liability, both noncriminal and criminal liability, for acting contrary to the sunshine law. So I'll go through that. So why is this important to you? Because first, compliance honors the transparency that the Florida legislature intended when it required public bodies to provide notice of the meetings, take minutes, have board members not discuss matters on which official action will be taken outside the board meetings. Second, the statute provides that unknowing violations, meaning you didn't intend for it to happen but it happens anyway, are noncriminal infractions which are accompanied by a $500 civil fine. Knowing violations are considered second-degree misdemeanors. One thing I didn't do last year is go through some cases to see whether there actually is prosecution, how the courts are treating violations of the sunshine law. So there's this case, October 21 of 2014, out of Orlando, where a private citizen was holding discussions with the various board members of an expressway authority, and it was not in compliance with the sunshine law, meaning he was conveying information about how other people might vote on a matter to other board members. And the state attorney wanted to prosecute the citizen. But what the court says is the First Amendment protects the lobbying activity of the citizen, and even though he may have overstepped, it was really the responsibility of the board members to make sure that there was no sunshine law violation. And the court actually said if the violation of the sunshine law occurred, the appropriate target for prosecution was members of the authority and not private citizen. So if you, you know, let's say, are induced by a citizen to have a conversation which you think steps too far, where he has discussed, he or she has discussed with other board members, how they might vote on a particular matter, you should stop that conversation because that would be a violation of the sunshine law on matters that are foreseeably coming before you. So even if a matter and application has not been filed, but you know that it is the kind of thing that would be filed, and that person has discussed with other board members how they intend to vote or might vote on it, you should stop that conversation and not be part of it. So different settings in which, you know, possible pitfalls might occur are social functions. Go to a cocktail party where two of you are in attendance, and it may involve a third party or not. You should avoid talking about any matter that could be coming before the board. I often, when I see two commissioners at my other city together talking, I say something like, "I hope it's weather, food, or sports." And, you know, just remember that you're not supposed to be having that kind of a conversation. If you go to, there are some settings where you are certainly entitled to be together and having, where there are conversations going on or discussions of things that might come before you. It might be a lecture, it might be a seminar, might be a candidate's night. What you should avoid getting involved in is a kind of cross-conversation where other board members are in the audience and you're having a conversation with, let's say, a proctor or moderator or somebody who's putting on the meeting. And questions are going back and forth with you and other board members. That should not happen. And you should probably exit from that kind of situation because that would be a violation. So one of the exemptions from sunshine law requirements is when you're performing a fact-finding role in a group. That is something that would be organized by the city attorney's office and staff, so, and they will follow the appropriate requirements. But if you, for example, are going to a site to, in a quasi-judicial matter, there's an application pending that's site-specific, and another board member shows up at the same time, you should probably not go through that site visit with that other board member. It's only a moderate inconvenience. Either ask him to leave or you leave, but it, you know, what you're put into a situation of is defending what you didn't say, even if you're both, you know, honoring that you're not having a discussion. But if you, if you both are asking questions of the owner of the site or the applicant and not having a cross-conversation, that may be a problem as well because you're doing it in front of the other person, and that may be considered a violation. When you are acting in your ultimate decision-making authority, that exception does not apply. It only applies when you're acting in an advisory capacity. So just be careful with that. Do you, are there any questions about sunshine law? Okay. So we've talked before about public records law generally. So it's, the public has a right to inspect or copy public records. Now, public records can include emails, computer records, planning commission minutes. For your purposes, the most important part would be either notes that you take or communications, written communications that you have with other persons. So if you're taking personal notes, which are temporary and not to formulate knowledge for purposes of the board, those notes are personal and not public record, and you can dispose of them, you don't have to maintain them, and you don't have to turn them over. But if you're using those notes, like, to preserve some information for a subsequent meeting or to pass a note to somebody else, those are public records. So not only is there public records issue if you're passing notes, but that's a sunshine law issue as well. So you should not be passing notes together. And I forgot to comment, one of the often overlooked issues on sunshine law is when there's private conversations on the dais. You should try and avoid that. I haven't noticed that here, but sometimes when you have a new board member, they're not familiar, maybe they haven't received the orientation, they'd reach over and have a conversation with you about, you know, an application. You should be careful and let that new board member know that that's not appropriate, that it's something to look out for. Sometimes you're, you know, just casual, having a conversation. It's something that is, is a concern under the sunshine law. So I, the only important issue on public records law for you was the notes, and they're private as long as you maintain them that way. Okay? We previously discussed quasi-judicial versus legislative decisions. There's additional procedures that you follow when it's quasi-judicial. Public is sworn. There is heightened due process requirements. So as part of those due process requirements, and you're sitting as quasi-judges, you're required to disclose ex-party contacts. But one of the interesting things to note about the quasi-judicial setting, I think, is cross-examination during a public hearing. The way the law is now, the only people who are entitled to cross-examine, according to case law, are the applicant or staff. And you have codified that pretty much in the LDRs, that only city staff, the applicant, and board members can cross-examine people who appear before you. But any member of the public who wants to speak cannot cross-examine another witness who is making a presentation to the board.
But the board can ask questions?
Yes.
We can cross-examine?
Yes. And that's provided for in the ordinance. So again, ex-party communications, just a reminder, if anybody talks to you, and this is not a sunshine law issue, these are non-board members talking to you about applications that are site-specific, that are coming before the board, you have an obligation to disclose those communications prior to the vote. And the requirements include the identity of the person, the group or entity with whom, person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and it must be made a part of the record before final action is taken. There's also an additional issue when you receive written communications, like an email on a quasi-judicial matter, you are supposed to make that part of the record, and what you should do is forward it to staff so that they can put it in the file for public inspection. So that's a, an ex-party communication requirement that is accompanied, you know, it's sort of related to both public records and sunshine law, but it's something you're obligated to do. And on the ex-party communication, so the disclosure that is supposed to take place, we make a point in the agenda of disclosures and communications. That's the time when you should provide that. And we've had some of this before, so you should be familiar with it. Any questions about either public records or expediting?
I know, and Pat, what always bothered me is a lot of times, we've even gotten emails from, from the city telling us that there will be a presentation by a developer or something, and we encourage you to attend, which I never go to.
Right.
But I don't know where that, is there in fact a line that should be drawn to your, going to any kind of a presentation by a developer or, or something that's, you know, might affect a change in, in the comp plan or something like that? Well, sometimes, sometimes they're not public workshops. I mean, we've gotten emails from, like, Johnson and Wales, they send you an email that we're doing, you know, invite you to a, an event that clearly is something that they want to make a presentation about their, their future or something like that. I'm just using that for an example, which could be no more than them trying to solicit.
Right. So the first question you need to ask yourself is, is this something that foreseeably could come before the board?
Right.
And so Johnson and Wales Campus Master Plan is something that would. And then you, your concern is whether it's a sunshine law issue you're going and whether it's a violation for you to appear.
Yeah.
And sometimes, you know, if the city is cosponsoring, which I don't know that they do, but I've seen that before, they can arrange for staff notice, staff to take minutes and notice. But if not, you just need to be careful that you're not having discussions with other board members who might also appear. You know, as long as the conversation doesn't evolve into cross-communications among board members, you should probably be okay, as long as you're listening to a presentation and not communicating.
Of course, that goes to homeowners associations also, correct?
Right. It's something to be sensitive to. So we previously talked about, well, conflicts of interest generally. You have an obligation to file a financial interest statement every year. I hope the city clerk's office is coordinating that with you. And that's something you should be diligent about. We had a board member in Miami Beach who failed to do it, and he was given a substantial amount of fines for doing that. So that's something you should pay attention to. On the subject of gifts, as a general rule, you do not accept any gift in exchange for your vote, any performance as a board member. Aside, aside from those kinds of gifts, which are absolutely prohibited, you cannot solicit or demand a gift. But if you do take a gift, there are disclosure requirements that are required by both county law and state law. I don't remember any city law requirements. Applying to board members? Okay. So you cannot accept a gift in excess of $100 from a lobbyist. And if the value of the gift is between 25 and 100, you need to file a form disclosing that gift. And, you know, I was going to tell the story of the planning director at Miami Beach was getting married, and he received a lot of gifts as, you know, wedding gifts. He actually had to file financial disclosure forms for those wedding gifts. Unless it's a direct family member or somebody who's clearly a friend, not associated with the city, you know, you should be really aware. And, you know, when in doubt, contact the clerk's office or city attorney's office and clarify it. And the last item on the agenda, are there any gift questions? No. Last item that I included because I think it's important to talk about is the Kuntz case, which is unconstitutional conditions. It's important to remember when you are considering quasi-judicial items, site-specific items, that the conditions have to relate to the application and the terms that the courts use are that it has a nexus to the project and that the, that the condition is roughly proportional to the effect or impacts that the project causes. You can't require something that's totally unrelated just because the city has a need for it. It has to be tied to the impacts or effects that the project is creating. So with that, unless there are any questions?
Because I actually had a slide here at the end for any questions.
May I ask a question on, say, with regards to that project that we had on, just off of West Dixie and 130th, and we made several suggestions about parking and possibly putting a pool on the roof and a rooftop garden?
possibly putting a pool on the roof and a rooftop garden. Instead of the surrounding grounds, we made the suggestions, that was up to the developer to do it. Now, that would be permissible, isn't it?
Right, those aren't conditions and you never said that if you didn't do them, they would be denied. It's more like an accommodation.
So in other words, if we said, if you don't, if you don't do that, we're gonna deny it, then that would be unconstitutional.
Well, then you'd have to evaluate to see whether it would be or not.
Okay.
You have to examine the relationship of that requirement to the project. Um.
I got you.
For example, if there was a city pool nearby and you're talking about an apartment building, that would overwhelm the city pool, maybe that's a reasonable condition. But that, that's something that, you know, should be analyzed with staff, providing you a factual background and basis for the condition.
A, a really good example is where our transportation concurrency exemption area. So technically, we can't require development to mitigate traffic impacts. Um, state statute says that, um, if we weren't the TCA, for example, you can only mitigate, require them to mitigate their own impact. So if the roadway is already failing, for example, you can't make them bring it up to non-failing because it's already failing. Um, they can only mitigate, as Gary said, their proportionate fair share of whatever that mitigation is. So we, I always tell everybody, be careful about exactions. And that's the term that's actually used is exactions because in this case, um, what they were requiring was way over and above, and there was no rational nexus to their pers- their impact of their particular development on the, what was it, the, the stormwater? I think it's the water management district. So, um, that's all we ask you is to be very careful in that. And I'll caution you as we go along that, um, that that's a dangerous piece of territory to go into. So just be careful with that. So with that, we'll, um, if you're ready to move into.
All right, we're ready to continue. All right, we're now ready for the public hearings. We'll begin with PC two dash nineteen. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending volume one, goals, objectives and policies of the city of North Miami, twenty sixteen, comprehensive plan. More specifically, the future land use element thereof, in accordance with the requirements of section one six three, point three one eight four, per inch three, Florida statutes twenty eighteen and chapter twenty-nine, article three, division eleven, section three dash one one zero two, per inch A, and sections three dash eleven oh five through three dash eleven ten of the city of North Miami Code of Ordinances, by amending the future land use element at policy one point eighteen point three, to provide for residential use within the Northwest Seventh Avenue Planned Corridor Development Overlay, PCD, as is permitted within other planned corridor development overlays, and to require a conditional use permit to allocate density bonus units in the PCD, providing for an initial hearing and subsequent transmittal of the proposed amendment to the reviewing agencies and or any interested local government or governmental agency for review under the expedited state review process, providing for an adoption hearing and subsequent transmittal of the proposed amendment, as may be amended to respond to comments from the reviewing agencies to the state land planning agency for a determination of completeness, providing for repeal, conflict severability, correction of scrivener's errors and an effective date. Staff report, please.
Certainly, sir. Again, for the record, Debbie Love, City Planner, Community Planning and Development. As the staff report indicates in the, the PowerPoint, as the staff report indicates, this is, uh, the purpose of this is to, and that long title, is to allow residential uses, um, in the PCD, um, on Northwest Seventh Avenue. This amendment is actually sponsored by, um, Councilman De Somme. Um, all the other PCDs in the city allow residential development. The, uh, when this was first established in twenty fifteen in the future land use, which is what we're looking at now during the comprehensive plan amendments. My apologies. Is that better? Okay. Uh, again, this is a comprehensive plan text amendment sponsored by Councilman Ga- um, De Somme. This is to amend, uh, policy one dash, uh, one point one eight point three of the future land use element, um, and establish residential density in this PCD, on this particular corridor. Uh, other PCDs within the city allow residential at various densities. This is the only one where in twenty fifteen, when the PCD was established, it did not allow residential density. So after looking at the, doing the Chinatown, uh, master plan, uh, and talking with the, uh, community and the development community, uh, Councilman Somme has, uh, is sponsoring this amendment to establish that residential density of up to a hundred and twenty-five dwelling units per acre. Um, additionally, this would also modify the fact that they're done by a conditional use permit. If you'll note that in the current, um, future land use element, some are by development agreement, some are by conditional use permit. Whereas, um, uh, sec- uh, policy one point one eight point two, I believe it is, requires us to, uh, use a conditional use permit as the method by which density bonuses are allocated. So this, we needed to change that to make sure that each of the PCDs reflect that you get the bonus of floating units, is actually the right terminology, through the conditional use permit, so that it's, it's consistent. And again, it's also to require that within the Chinatown corridor, that area between one eighteenth and one thirty-fifth, that, um, there are design guidelines that the, all the development must follow. So when we take a look at what the benefits for this would be, is it's definitely the way to encourage mixed use. Uh, we heard from, uh, a number of folks as they were trying to move development through in that area, saying really they need the residential component. But when we were doing the Chinatown master plan, in order to really activate that corridor, you really do need residential to, to activate that corridor. Um, and so we didn't want to just limit it to just the Chinatown. Give everybody the same opportunity through that entire corridor, just like we do elsewhere in the city. Um, it's really to promote economic development so that as you come through again, these developments can move through with the residential and do a really nice mixed use project. Um, we do not, if you look at the map, um, that's in your package, the last page, um, you'll notice that there is absolutely no, to the west of that, there's absolutely no mixed use. It's all single family residences. So this would allow, uh, more housing options, uh, through apartments for professionals, elderly housing, young people, um, who want that option, or maybe even some of the folks who are currently in single family homes who want to downsize. So it allows more options on the west side of the city. Um.
You're going right up to a hundred and forty-third street.
I'm sorry.
That's going right up to a hundred and forty-third street?
Yes, sir, it's going all the way in the entire corridor.
So that's gonna be the whole corridor?
Yes, sir.
And the Chinatown motif will only be up to a hundred and thirty-fifth street?
Correct.
Right.
And then it can, but it continues further north.
Yes, the PCD will come to, that, that continues all the way through that entire corridor. Um.
Two hundred feet, right, I think.
Right, so we have, uh, the next steps, uh, this will go before city council on the twenty-sixth, the first reading. And then it stops because it has to be transmitted, the comprehensive plan amendment has to be transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity, which is the state land planning agency. They, it takes about thirty to forty-five days, which is why that big long title talks about transmitting to all the different agencies. So everybody from FDOT to the different surrounding communities have a chance to make comment on what we're doing. Um, and then it will come back and we have a hundred and eighty days to amend it or adopt it. And then that's when the second reading would be scheduled. So at this point, we don't have that second reading scheduled, it's to be determined based upon when it comes back from the state land planning agency. When it does come back and we do adopt it at second reading, it doesn't become effective until thirty-one days after the second reading because that allows for a, an appeal at the state level of the amendment. So with that, that's the, um, end of staff's presentation.
All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Please state your name for the record and your address. Calling once for the public hearing. Calling twice for the public hearing. Three times for the public hearing. No one wishing to speak to this? The public hearing is closed. All right, gentlemen, we can discuss it or we can move straight to motion.
I'd like to move straight to motion.
All right.
That, yes.
You're gonna move to approve?
Move to approve.
All right, Kenneth, each second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move to the companion LDR if you have any questions.
We have done it this time, so this will be PC three dash nineteen. This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, providing for text amendments to chapter twenty-nine of the city of North Miami Code of Ordinances, by amending article three, division four, entitled Conditional Uses, specifically at section three dash four zero one, entitled Purpose and Applicability, and at article three, division thirteen, entitled Development Agreements, specifically at section three dash one three zero one, entitled Purpose and Applicability, further amending article four, division three, entitled Special Purpose and Overlay Districts, specifically at section four dash three zero six, entitled Planned Corridor Overlay District PCD, to establish residential density in the State Road Seven, Northwest Seventh Avenue, PCD, and require a conditional use permit for development within the PCD, providing for repeal, conflict severability, correction of scrivener's errors, codifications and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. Uh, once again, for the record, Debbie Love, City Planner, Community Planning and Development. What you're going to, what we're gonna talk about now is the actual companion LDR. As you all know, that once you pass the comprehensive plan, then we need to do the companion LDR. If we can pull the PowerPoint up on the screen, please. Once again, um, this is now the text amendment to the land development regulations that will implement the comprehensive plan text amendment that you all just approved. This is amending section four dash three oh six to allow it to fix the conditional use permit issue, to clarify that it is up to the density, including the floating units. So you can see that clarification of up to, including the floating units. So it's not up to a hundred and twenty-five and then floating units on top of that.
A hundred and twenty-five with the floaters.
With the floating, max, so when you can get, yes.
I'm looking at section three thirteen dash one. All that is, is just changing the terminology first, correct? From planned development overlay district to planned community urban design.
No, that's actually just clarifying that this is applicable, let me get where you are. Uh, no, what that is, is that's now, you're changing the fact that, that, um, there's a couple of different sections of the code here. Um, thirteen oh one actually is where it required development agreements if you were in the planned corridor development. So remember, we talked about how the comprehensive plan requires it through the conditional use permit and we had to fix that in the text? Now we're actually fixing that in the LDRs as well. So we're just simply striking the planned corridor development overlay district under, that requires the development agreement. So it's, it's all these little touches that somehow if you don't admit, if you don't catch them, you'll have internal conflicts.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you because
Yes, sir.
that was before what you're looking at and I wanted to try to follow in line here.
Of course, sir.
Your changes.
No worries.
Um, Debbie, through, you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A question, just to understand the process. Why did you include the floating units in the total rather than separate?
Because that was the intent, is that it is a hundred and twenty-five max dwelling unit as far as the density. It was a clarification so that if you have, as your underlying is six, you can go up to a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five. So you'd request then the difference between one twenty-five and your six to get your per acre. So that was the original intent, uh, when the comp plan was done, that it's capped at that hundred and twenty-five. We just wanted to make sure that it's clear, um.
So that you don't have bonus units off top of the one twenty-five.
Correct, right. And, you know, nobody's actually asked for that. But we believe in trying to make things as absolutely crystal and we thought this is a great opportunity since we have to touch this area anyway, to go ahead and make that, that slight clarification.
Aren't we, we're on the low side, are we not?
Of what, sir?
Compared to other cities as far as density per acre. Our max is a hundred and twenty-five. I mean, like North Miami Beach is a heck of a lot more than ours.
Uh, it, it depends upon where they're located. A lot of communities who do not have transit, you know, in that area, they, they're lower density. Um, so it really just depends upon what the community is like. So it really varies from community to community, um, and is geared toward their capacity, what has been approved at the state level on their future land use map. So it really goes back to all of the capacity that was approved by the state.
What are we at at, um, just from our, uh, at the new development on Biscayne, what are we at there at, um?
I'm sorry, what, sir? What, what development?
On, on Biscayne, Solomia.
Uh, there, I don't know what it is, to be honest with you. Off the top of my head, I just know that the number of dwelling units is about, that they've been allocated through their conditional use permits is not based upon, um, acreage, it's actually based upon just how many that we granted to them. Um, they have a hundred and eighty-something acres out there and I think they have like forty-two and change dwelling units assigned currently.
They have what?
About forty-two hundred, a little over forty-two hundred currently assigned dwelling units. Um, but in the rack and the regional activity center in which they sit, uh, there's a total was allocated of seven thousand, but the rack, remember, goes across to that new SD TOD. And we have signed two thousand of those seven thousand to the new SD TOD. So that leaves about six, five, six hundred dwelling units.
Okay, I just wondered.
Well, what I'm a little confused with here is, um, we're saying a hundred and twenty-five, um, DU per acre as floating units, but it says subject to availability of floating units.
Correct.
So.
If you run out of floating units, him Lloyd.
First come, first served, right?
Yeah, so, so, I mean, that a hundred and twenty-five then is not guaranteed, is what you're saying to the developer?
It's not guaranteed anyway in two reasons. It's not guaranteed because the ultimate arbiter of whether or not, um, the dwelling units are given isn't staff, it isn't the developer, it's the city council. So while they can get up to a hundred and twenty-five dwelling units per acre, depending upon city council, they can opt to reduce that, not give them. But it's also then, the other arbiter is, we have five thousand, thereabouts dwelling units. And once they're gone, they're gone unless the city does a citywide capacity analysis and do whatever upgrades result from that infrastructure before the state would actually allow us to have additional density.
So if, if someone comes to us and petitions for additional units, how are we to be, how are we to judge whether or not, unless staff directs us that it's okay? In other words, we have to, we have to rely on you to tell us that it's okay, that, yeah, it's fine, he's asking for fifty, we're going to allow him to ask for fifty or X, X amount.
Right, that's.
How we have to approach, how we would determine any of the DU's?
Right, we look at it based upon the criteria in the code. So staff would say, yes, it meets it, no, it doesn't meet it, and that would be done before it even gets to your level. The only time you'll ever see something come before you is if staff can recommend approval and say it's meeting all of those criteria because we, we, um, there's a lot that goes back and forth between, before you even see it. So we may say, no, that's not enough open space or that's not enough public assembly. And so you need to go back to the drawing board, come back and bring something back. So we really put them through the wringer on our end. So we really put them through the wringer on our end before it even comes to you all, but ultimately, no matter what we do, at the end of the day, city council can agree with staff's recommendation or not, you can agree with staff recommendation or not. If you, we say and look, it meets all of these criteria, you still have the option to say, well, yeah, well, we, we don't agree. Any other questions? Okay.
None at this point.
Okay, sir, thank you. So once again, it's the same issue with correcting the conditional use permit. It's also, again, acknowledging the Chinatown design guidelines. So you'll see that the comp plan, a lot of the language in the LDRs mirror your comprehensive plan. And again, the same benefits, you know, encouraging mixed use, economic development, expanding the housing options. And critically, it really is that now you've got, in addition to the internal inconsistency with what was required by the comp plan for the corridors, you now have the consistency with the comprehensive plan amendment you just approved. So the next step on this is slightly different, because this is the LDR. So it will go for first reading along with the companion comprehensive plan amendment, just like it did with you tonight on the twenty-sixth. However, as you remember, I told you, it has to be transmitted to the department. So we have to set now this LDR aside until after it comes back, the comprehensive plan amendment comes back from the state, it gets approved at second reading along with the second reading of the LDR amendment. So they kind of like, this reading will stop after first reading at city council and kind of wait for the results of deo, because whatever amendments they may require that the council approves in the comp plan amendment, that may adjust the LDR.
So it could be well into the fall hypothetically?
I would tell you, it would be at least May or June, because it all depends on how quickly we can reschedule this and how it can get through deo. So once again, it has to be, get on to city council agenda. We have to figure out what their comments are, we have, that's gonna take at least forty-five days to get the comments back, get a new staff report prepared. So you're probably looking at four months, maybe? I usually tell everybody, give it six months and then that's a good conservative number.
Well, that's, and given that everybody takes off the month of August, you're, you're looking into the fall.
Yeah, if we can't get it into the June or July, then yeah, definitely.
Other things may crowd it out, it can happen.
Hopefully not, but, you know, because we're gonna try to stay on track and move this as soon as we can, because this is a critical piece of development here in the city. So with that, that's the end of my presentation, sir.
All right, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. State your name and address for the record. First call, second call, anyone wishing to speak to this? Final call, anyone wishing to speak to this item? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Chair will call for a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Fight over, Kenny, you'll get the motion?
Yeah, I make the motion, we approve it.
To approve, Mike, you're second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
By the way, this is very good.
I'm sorry, sir?
I said, this is very good, what we did tonight. I think it really changes a lot of stuff and makes things better for that, for Seventh Avenue.
We would all certainly hope so, it's been a neglected area for a very long time. All right.
Staff is excited about it.
All right, go, go ahead, Kenny, then we'll wrap it up.
Two articles in the Wall Street Journal, one dated January twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh. And the state of Oregon's gonna pass a whole rent control for the whole state. And what they're blaming it on is because housing is getting so expensive in Oregon. What actually is causing it is development restrictions. They're making it so ridiculous, like in the city of Eugene, that you can't build, especially in the instruct, the current infra, infrastructure, the current buildings, you wanna rip them down and go high and so forth and so, you can't do it. And as a result, when you don't have the housing for the people out there, the rents skyrocket. And that's what's happening in California. So, you know, maybe some of our elected officials would see that and we talk about density and traffic and this and that, well, density is good, you know? And then today, I, I, there was an article in the Wall Street Journal about people leaving Illinois, Connecticut, New Jersey, New York, and coming right down here to good old Miami. And the reason being is the new tax structure, that you can only knock off ten thousand on your federal income tax and your state income tax or your, your property tax. And people in these high, high-priced states like California, where you're paying thirteen percent state tax, in New York, you're paying a city income tax and a state income tax, plus your real estate tax, they're leaving, because they can't write it off anymore, only up to ten grand. And what was happening here, our housing market, especially in our condos, our luxury condos downtown, was slowing down a little bit with the foreign market, now it's picking up again. So, you know, I hope we don't miss, and we always seem, in this city, to miss the boat. And I hope we can start changing the direction in which we're going. Density is good, height is good, re-do the infield, you know? I mean, that's what I, I feel like I'm talking to the mirror.
Well, I think that's some of what we did here tonight.
Well, I, we gotta go a lot further, Mike, believe me.
Oh, we hope so.
One, one step at a time, but always compliments to staff, that you're trying and looking out for stuff. You know, out of the box thinking, sort of trying to come to a better way of looking at things and doing things that makes it easier for the city to grow and for people to have opportunities, like you mentioned. People who wanna move out of their houses or perhaps would rather live in an apartment or a condo, you know? And these kind of options, as you mentioned earlier, is a wonderful way of looking at some of the new developments, is, is providing people options, you know? To stay within the city, and that's so important, that we create opportunities for people to stay here in our city. People who grow here and go to school here shouldn't have to move away to have a different kind of opportunity, you know, than what we offer.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
All right, well, having said that, and yes, Ms. Love, I, I'm, I'm very impressed with the way this is being handled. We're lining this up properly and not taking one half and then trying to fix the back half six months or a year later. These things need to be done together and we're, we're moving along on this very well. All right, we have no committee reports, no old business, no new business. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, the fifth of March, at seven PM. And with that, the chair, by the way, a question. Does the chair actually have to call for a motion to adjourn, or can the chair simply declare the meeting adjourned? Well, it may be nice, but is it required?
I didn't see that one in the presentation.
Yes, that was not in the presentation.
With all due respect, I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
I suppose there could be objection if you declare.
Either way, I make a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Seconded by, by, by Mr. Eich, all in favor? That's it, thank you very much, everybody, it's great fun. I think we've got something good accomplished tonight and we're out of here in an hour.